It is 5:30 on the committee of the whole 5:30 meeting. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clark, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notorianno.
Here.
Alderwoman Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present, and I might note that Alderman Carlson almost got promoted there.
Oh, my.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, Aquorma is present.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval of the Tuesday, May 9th Committee in Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Would you not? Do we have a presentation tonight?
We do.
Okay, well, before we get to that, I have been asked to move one ordinance with the leave of the council. We'll move this to the front of the meeting. Very quickly, though, before we do that, I'd just like to point out to everyone on the council chambers. At the last council meeting, we adopted ordinance 2023-205, which is a resolution adopting a pledge of civility. Everyone has a copy of that at your desk today. Just want to make sure that we keep this in mind. We are, it's a new council, it's a new day, and I'd like to make sure that we do our best to, in the interest of civility, promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. So let's just all keep that in mind, we voted for it unanimously, let's keep this moving along. That said, I would like for all of your support in moving ordinance 2023-226 to the front of the meeting agenda.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Clark, can you please read the ordinance?
2023-226, an ordinance approving the appointment of Ethan Posey as Director of the Office of Community Relations. Move for debate.
Sorry, can I?
Moved and seconded for debate. I understand we have Ethan Posey here, but I'm going to ask if we could just please hold our questions and concerns for his appointment until next week so we can allow him to deal with a personal issue. So, all those in favor of moving this to debate?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Okay, now we're going to move on to presentations. I understand we have a presentation tonight for the Juneteenth celebration. We have, who do we have here for this? I'm sorry, I don't have my notes, no? We don't? We will hold this presentation until later in the meeting, and if they come later, we will come back and hear from them. It's an exciting event coming. Next is ordinances tabled, the remaining in committee.
2022-384, 2023-086, 2023-173, 2023-201, 2023-202, 2023-203.
Thank you, does anyone have any action on any of these items?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would like to move 2023-203 off the table and on for debate.
We have a motion, is there a second?
What is it?
I'm sorry.
What is it?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move the tabled ordinance 2023-203 to debate, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Yes.
Would you like?
All right, actually Alderman Donilon has indicated to speak first, Alderman Donilon.
Would you like for me to read the ordinance first?
Yes, please do.
2023-203, an ordinance amending chapter 170 by adding sections 170.17.71 through 170.17.78 to the 1988 City of Springfield Code ordinances as amended relating to registration of residential rental properties.
Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a parliamentary procedure question. Corporation council, since this ordinance is sitting on the table, as tabled, how many votes does it take to get it off of?
To get it off of the table, you need a two-thirds vote of council.
Help me with the math, how many votes is that?
That would be... Seven.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm sorry, six.
No, six is a majority, that wouldn't be...
No, seven, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You asked me to do math, I apologize.
I understand.
Thank you. Alderman Williams, did you want to speak on the ordinance?
Yes, so I just think it's important that when we have ordinances like this that impact the community, we need to discuss it. It's not like the ordinance that I'm proposing is set in stone. Of course, we debate, we share ideals, we make amendments and things like that, but we need to be able to allow the groups that support this to come in, and we need to move this forward. So, thank you, I ask that you bring this to debate, and then next Friday, next Tuesday, we'll deal with it. Thank you.
And as one of the sponsors, I just have to ask Alderman Williams, I haven't heard from anyone in support of this ordinance, no offense, but including yourself. So, do you know which groups are supporting this ordinance?
Well, according to one group, Icon, they did a survey, and part of what this really deals with, in the survey, most of the members said yes. Now, I realize that a couple of Aldermen didn't respond, but the majority did respond, and the majority did say yes to this. And so, they wanted to be a little more stricter than what I wrote it, but I tried to work with the previous mayor and write it in a way where at least we could get something and get something moving on these vacant lots and homes that were having problems with landlords.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't see anyone else who wants to speak, we have this, you can hit that button there, Alderman.
I hit it.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer.
It's a little slow, I've been gone for two weeks, so it's, gotta get back in the swing of things. I guess the, my understanding is that we have access, we being the, being the Public Works has access to who the owners of all these properties are. Am I correct with that?
We're supposed to.
Nate?
Maybe, I'm sorry.
Can you come up, Director?
Hey, Alderwoman? Director, if you could please come to the podium.
The theory is, yes, that we have access to owners of any of the properties, but we were having a discussion today just about how difficult it is to make contact with a lot of the owners, the out-of-state owners, who reside out of state, how difficult it is to make contact with them. And even when we do need to take court action, how hard it is to serve them with the appropriate papers. It's very difficult in some cases.
And then, and then, so if we were to do this, they're going to take a staffer to keep it up, or you're going to have to hire somebody?
I'm not going to say yes, but I'm not going to say no.
I feel like you're running for office.
Only for cover.
Do we have any other questions? Oh, yes, we do. Alderman Hanauer, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Alderwoman Purchase.
I had spoke with Polly from Icon last, was it last week or the week before?
Director, I wouldn't...
I think it was maybe two weeks ago, and she was asking for this to be put on hold, and we had discussed about maybe having out-of-state landlords registered versus everyone that's a landlord in the entire city. So, I would like to ask to have her come forward and talk about that as well, too, before we make some decisions. And I'm not for sure if she spoke to you about that, Alderman Williams.
Yes, but the ordinance is out-of-stated, that's the problem. Some want it to be also city people. Right now, it only addresses out-of-state landlords. So, we need to read the ordinance as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to repeat what Icon President has said to me, not for me.
Thank you, Alderwoman Purchase. Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, you know, when this idea was brought up before, before the prior council, we had a discussion on this, I was very open-minded about it, but I did ask specifically our staff that handle these types of things on a daily basis, and the director told me when I asked him pointedly, is this necessary? And the answer was no, it is not necessary, because they have the ability to find property owners and individuals through the electronic means and services that the Public Works Department and the legal department has. Now, is it always going to be easy to find somebody from out of state? Of course not. That's something that we've encountered with mobile home parks, with duplexes, with single-family homes throughout the city for decades. And that's, that seems to be the problem that we hear on a recurring basis. Of course, we don't have perfect landlords that own property, that live here, own property locally all the time, but I think our department in the past has done an excellent job of dealing with those things. We bring forward, I mean, I know I do, and I'm sure others at the horseshoe, and you newbies will as well, bring forward things sometimes on a daily basis. And the department sends out inspectors and deals with these issues. It could be something as minor as, something as minor as a tall grass to something as major as a structural issue. I'm impressed with the professionals that we have, I trust their opinions, and I intend on voting no.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Notorianno.
Oh, yep, so, thank you, Chair. I'm looking through this because I also am in favor of a landlord registry because, because of all of these reasons, that we need to be able to get in touch with people, and that I believe sunshine is the best disinfectant. So, I was going through and looking at this because no one, I didn't know anything really about this ordinance since it was proposed before my time. And yeah, I'm reading through, the beginning says it's folks who live outside of Sangamon County, but then, that's what the purpose says. And then it says, for folks who live outside of the state of Illinois shall register. So, yeah, I think this is a good jumping off point, but I would like to hear from Icon, since they are a big proponent of this, and I know they've been working on it for several years. Unfortunately, their meeting was canceled this month, and I just don't know where they're at on this. But, yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up, that it does say you're outside of Sangamon County and outside of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Carlson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In my previous life, I worked down at the county clerk's office, the assessor's office. Isn't already public knowledge or public record who the owners of these property are? I mean, we certainly have to send them a tax bill. I just got mine a few weeks ago, I think we have to send them a tax bill twice a year. So, to me, just another layer, it's a little bit duplicative to me, so.
Thank you, and, thank you, and my apologies, Alderman Gregory.
It's all good.
I'm getting over a cold, and we're all, my eyes are...
It's all good.
Keep these glasses up and down. Alderman Gregory.
It's all good, thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I don't have a problem with this ordinance, but I really strongly, and I believe I've had some conversations, and I don't think that throwing everybody on a landlord registry is the way, but I do think that we need to implement putting people on a landlord registry or a housing registry of these houses that we consistently deal with year after year. And I'm not saying, oh, your grass is long, and we're going to throw you on that and make you pay blah, 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 but our health and safety violations and issues like that, you know, after one, twice, three times of sending our inspectors, well, maybe we need to register you sometimes. And I think that's a good process, you know, maybe that's another ordinance, but I do think that, you know, we have to start holding the knuckleheads of the houses that we have to deal with year after year. I could throw out addresses that I deal with every day, year after year, the four years that I've been there, and I think those sets. And then we'll start, you know, walking to a point where we have a nice list, and these houses will eventually get fixed, and they can come off the list because they're fixed, or they've served us an amount of time, I haven't thought it all the way out, but I have put some thought into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams.
Yes, so, you know, I mean, I respect everybody's opinion, and this is what I wanted. I wanted some kind of discussion and some kind of debate, but, you know, we just had Memorial Day, and you wouldn't believe the calls I got about people trying to cook out, and right next door is a house, and they said, Alderman, when you got appointed, we told you about this house. And so, they're trying to cook out with raccoons, possums, whatever's growing in that abandoned tall house, and yes, the county does have records, but we also know, as the director has said, that doesn't mean nothing if the information isn't correct. If information isn't kept up, and we're not able to communicate with the director, I just had my opponent, who ran against me, write us and talk about a landlord out-of-state issue where he and me have been working with, where they're making changes, and we can't deal with this landlord correctly, and a lot of it has to do with communication. And again, all we're doing right now at this point is allowing these neighborhood groups, Icon Neighborhood Associations, anybody listening with these kind of properties, to weigh in so that we do make it right. Icon, I'm glad that we want them here, because they are one of the ones who think it's not restrictive enough. They are one of the ones saying, why are we just saying out-of-state? Some of these people are right here in Springfield that are the problem landlords. So, it's a good discussion, and I want to move it forward. Thank you, I hope that you guys support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
I believe, I'm trying to, and Chair, I think that you were part of the ordinance that we put together, or an amendment to an ordinance that we kind of used progressive discipline, and they, I don't, I assume that Public Works is putting that in place, but one of the problems is, we got the same people that have the problems, and we're just not hitting them hard enough. They start hitting, you start hitting them in the pocketbook, and they're going to, they're going to start doing things. I know there's been cases, Alderman Donilon had an apartment building where it was in shambles, and they, we find them a pretty good amount, and they're finally starting to work on it. Alderman Williams, I can tell you that I had a house that was dilapidated, that when I asked how long it's going to be, they said it would take three to four years in the legal system before we could tear it down. Because you don't want to have it to where it's six months, or we could take the house right away, and, you know, we don't give them the opportunity to fix the problem. So, I mean, it's, the legal system is slow, and I don't know if that's, I don't think it's a city problem that it's because it takes that long. I think it also has to deal with state law, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I was told that early on, so. But I do know that we do have on the books ordinances, an ordinance that we are to use when we go out and we have the same problem. We're supposed to fine them $100, $100 or whatever it is, and then the next time, you know, double that amount, and the next time, triple that, or whatever it is, I can't remember without having the ordinance in front of us. But, you know, maybe we need to look at that and put a little bit more teeth in it, because, you know, we all have the same, I got same people that they don't mow their grass, you know, we all have that, and it seems like every spring, until I make phone calls to Public Works, their grass is, you know, looks like a wheat field. And, and so, we do have that. You know, I think that some of the, some of the, the neighborhood associations would like to have this ordinance, because they want to have, they will be able to get a copy of the people's names, and they will bother, you know, the landlords or whatever, if something's not kept up their standards, too. I don't know if that's necessarily a good thing. And so, you know, I think that we take, take what we have on the books, if we want to, if we want to make it stronger, and make it, you know, to where there's more teeth in it, and less forgiving, it'll show these people. That's, I think you hit them in the pocketbook. I don't know, I don't know what else, you know, I don't think a registry is going to do that. So.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yes, well, I appreciate that, but I will say that a registry is a starting point, because this is, these are legit concerns. The fines, to me, it's like fining a homeless person. If I'm already too poor, so I don't have trash service, I'm already so poor, I don't cut my grass, so fine ain't always the answer, because they so poor, they ain't going to pay the fine. And the opposite happens as well. I'm so rich, well, Alderman, you had them cut the grass, and you charged them extraordinary amounts, and you stuck it on my tax bill, I just have some accountant somewhere that just pays off the tax bill, I don't even know I paid for the grass cutting. So, fine is not always the answer for me. I think we just have to put the work in and think about how to handle these situations. My situation is where the landlord's in prison. My situation is where the landlord is in a nursing home. No fault of their own, they age out, they can't take care of the home, they have to go into the nursing home, and the house is in limbo, but the grass is not getting cut. The upkeep's not, there's all those kind of issues. This is a starting point, is all I'm saying. We have to work with the neighborhood associations, not just Icon, but all of them, and everybody else, and we have to be prepared and get ready to put things in place that may make some landlords uncomfortable, but we need to do what we need to do. This is why the city has these kind of lots that look the way they look, and has these kind of buildings. Now, maybe not so much west, but I'm telling you, on the east side, and I'm telling you, this Memorial Day, these people called me and said, you know, we're trying to cook out, and here's all these creatures coming out, and blamed me because the house was told about to me when I first got in three years ago. So, I hear you about how long it takes to do something, but I think if we talk to our staff, or they come next Friday and they weigh in, you will find out the difficulty of dealing with these landlords without that correct information to where we can touch them. We have to be able to touch them to deal with them. So, again, I'm asking your support for a legit ordinance that we can always amend, change, or improve, or take away as we go along until we get this thing right to make things better. Thank you.
So, I, and I have a question, and I hear what you're saying, and I do understand it, Alderman Williams. I don't know that this ordinance does that. This ordinance defines a residential rental property as a multifamily dwelling containing more than 50 units. That's not going to hit your, your single family.
Okay, I'm glad you're saying that, we can fix that, this is what I wanted.
Excuse me, Alderman, it's my turn, okay? So, I think maybe...
Civility, remember.
Excuse me, yes, that means not interrupting someone when they're speaking.
Say it a little nicer.
You really want me to go there? Because this is called civility. You let me finish what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that I think that what you're talking about and the needs that we're defining as we're having this conversation, I mean, that perhaps what has been drafted by a prior administration and a prior legal counsel does not actually meet the core of what you're trying to address. We have a new legal counsel who will be coming on board with the city very soon. We have a new Public Works Director who is going to be able, well, it's going to be up tonight to talk to us about credentials and possible visions for the future. So, I'm wondering if maybe this ordinance that's talking about 50 units, and that's where this ordinance starts for registration, 50 units that live outside of the state of Illinois, maybe that's not exactly getting at the problem that we're looking for. And so, possibly what we need to do is have more of a working group among members of this council who have concerns. We all have these properties in our wards. If you want to talk about animals living in places, I can show you Ballyvone and those apartments right across from Sacred Heart Griffin, and one of my nice neighborhoods, right, you know, Mossman, we've, I don't see Daryl and Sharon tonight, but these properties are everywhere in the city.
Right by there.
Yeah, and Alderman Donilon had, and then actually, Ballyvone would qualify under this one, but, but I think that what you're looking at is a little more inclusive than what this ordinance goes to. And so, maybe instead of taking something that doesn't address the concerns that we've raised just in this brief conversation, maybe we move this one off, and we have a more inclusive conversation where people are talking to each other. I mean, and I understand, again, Alderman, I understand this is important to you, but I never even got a phone call about this ordinance from you. So, I think we need to be having these conversations, we need to work with our legal counsel, with our new public, our new legal counsel who has not yet started, with our new building director, and our new, our Public Works Department, and see what we can do under a different administration to make a more effective change. So, that's why I'm also going to be voting no to this. I don't think it, I don't think it comes close to addressing the really pertinent issues that you raise. Alderman Williams, if you'd like to respond?
Yes, so, I guess all I could tell you is, you know, people are going to vote the way they want to vote. I, I'm just trying to do the right thing, and I realize that this may not be a perfect ordinance, but it's a start, like I said, and we are starting some. See, for me, it's not about who's in the seat, who's the mayor, who's the corporate com, that's not what this is about. No matter who's in the seat, this is my situation in my ward, and what's going on, I believe, like you guys are verifying across the city. So, we can't keep making it about, well, who's in now, and who's doing what now. It exists now, and we have to deal with it now. So, I'm not for the delay, I'm for us moving this forward, and I'm using the process to try to get us to move this forward, to hear from our citizens, and then, that may answer some of your questions. Now, you will be then, talk to some folks and got some things going, you know, but it's just a debate, that's why they call it the debate agenda, you know, to hear it out. Who knows where it goes from there? That's why we have the amendment process. So, I'm not saying it's set in stone, and you guys, of course, if you don't want to support it, all I can do is accept that.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Notorianno? No, Triano, I'm sorry. Throw something at me next time.
Thank you, Chair. Yet, so my, I, as reading through this, I have a couple of concerns. I share Alderwoman Conley's concern that this is for multi-unit dwellings, because a lot of the problem properties I have are, you know, just houses rented. And I am afraid that if we were to pass this, then there might be a feeling of, oh, we're done with landlords. I don't want anyone to be able to say that, so that is another one of my reservations about this one. Yeah.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Redpath.
You know, we've dealt with this for 30 years on the city council, same problems, and we've tried to put in solutions to the things. We've taken things to Public Works and tried to implement these processes and use progressive discipline to, to deal with these landlords. Alderman Williams has got a point, there is a problem out there that we got to deal with. I don't agree with the wording on this, but I am willing to sit down with him or anybody else and work through this with our new director, with our old director, whomever it takes to do this, to make this the right thing, because people sitting out in the backyard barbecuing should not have to look at wild animals running through a house. I don't want it, I mean, there wouldn't be none next to my house, but, because I'd get the old 22 out, I guess. No, just kidding, chief. But the bottom line is, there are valid points on both sides of this argument. Alderman Williams is right, people shouldn't have to live next to that kind of stuff, and we don't want it either. So, I'm not for this, but I am willing to sit down with a group, like you said, and work this out, because we got to find a solution, because we've been dealing with this since I've been on the council, '87.
I feel like that you should take some more responsibility than Alderman.
When you were in grade school, sorry.
Bless your heart.
Pardon me.
Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, I, I do have a question. How many, how many vacant houses do we have on the demo list? Nate, would you know, or Director? I'm trying, not, I don't want to throw you.
I think it's about 150.
Because I thought, I thought we put quite a bit of money in, and, and I don't, you know...
Yeah.
There's, there's more, not, not only the animal problems and the vagrant problems, but it is also a situation with our firefighters when a lot of times those houses are the ones that catch fire because people go in there, they get cold, they light fires or do whatever and they, and then we go in, they're not safe and, and we end up with, with a firefighter getting injured. It's, it's happened quite often. And so I don't know what we have to do to make sure that we take down as many, um, many houses as, as we can. But I think it's something we have to look at. And so, uh, and this is something we've said all along. I think last year, we, we talked, we wanted more done. And if we have to hire multiple companies to do it, then, then so be it. I mean, we don't have to just give it to one company, we can give it to multiple com, companies. You know, and have, and have them get them done. And, you know, because a lot of these, they're vacant, they're, they're probably, they're already on the demo list. There's not much more we can do as a city except tear them down. So that would, that would solve a lot of the issues right there. So I, I would like to know how many we have on the list and how many we actually are planning to do this year? Do you know that?
Well, it changes based upon fires and we obviously have a lot we're doing too with the rail project. I think we have 70 on the demo list currently at this time, though.
How about the dilapidated vacant houses, though? I mean, I'm not talking, the rail, the rail thing, that's a whole different ballgame, but.
Those are just the 70 demos for dilapidated houses. And then we have additional ones that are rail related that we will be demolishing as part of the rail project.
How many total? So how many total houses do we have that, that are on the list that need to go? So if we've got 70 that we're doing this year, how many, how many total do we have on the list?
Well, there are some that are in different phases. Some get fixed, actually. We have agreed orders to repair. I, I believe that that generally ranges in the 10 to 15 range that get repaired while the case is going on. And then the, the, it fluctuates between 70 to 100, it seems like. But I know that we just have a contract for Parkland Environmental to demo. And then we will have our, our crews, we're planning on demolishing between November and April of next year as well. Um, and we can get down a couple, a couple a week, basically.
Well, like I said, if we have to get another contract out in order to get these down, then, then let's do it. But if we're, if we're putting in, we're putting in for 70 and we're, and the contractor can only do 50, that's not helping us. We're not, we're not getting ahead of everything.
And I know we are looking also at applying for a grant to help subsidize that so that we can demolish some more.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Well, again, it's a starting point. It's not a perfect ordinance, but I do believe we have the ability to amend and change as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Purchase?
No, I just heard him say, I was going to ask, so you're asking to pass the ordinance for just apartment buildings, basically, over 50 units like your ordinance says? And then come back and amend it for like single-family homes and duplexes? What Alderwoman Conley said?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, I'm glad to hear now. We can add, maybe I kind of be happy. We can add the individual owners of houses now and then things like that. I just want to move it along and get it going. This is the starting point. Okay, it's, it's not satisfactory, so we're going to get a little more restricted. Maybe we'll do that then. So that, that's kind of where I'm at on it. But I don't want it sitting on the table in the committee. Thank you.
And then you plan to have Icon come in next week to speak on it?
Any citizen that's listening or that has the situation or wants to weigh in on it, just the time to do it when we're in debate.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion on this?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure, go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you. I think it's important, though, next week or when we, whenever we do discuss this, is really, and this, this would be a little word from my, my friend, Mr. Fuchs, is to really understand the process. Because the, the process is, is we have to first send a inspector out, then they get seven days to rectify the problem. We normally give them up to 21 days to rectify that problem before we go do it and, you know, cut the grass. So I, I, I think that's very, very important for us to understand the process first, our legal restrictions, and then go, go from there and, and tweak it. You know, I've talked to, you know, both sides of this, this thing. And, and we do have some things on the books that help us out and, and we got some areas to grow, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Is there any more discussion from anyone on the council? I'm just going to say, I do think we've made a case today for, you know, possibly a working group with our, our, our new administration. And, and Alderman Williams, please hear me out. It does matter who's in the administration because that, the executive branch of our government is the, is the branch that, that makes, makes the enforcement, that, that implements the programs and the ordinances that we adopt. So I, I think, you know, we'll see how this goes tonight, but I also think that we're making a case for, you know, a working group of at least, you know, no more than, I would say, three council members to work with our public works director, to work with when, when our, our new corporation council comes on board. And I understand, you know, you've, our new corporation council has a significant amount of experience with, you know, municipal league and, and working at that municipal level. There may be ideas out there that we haven't considered. And, and I think, given how long we've been dealing with this problem, as, as Alderwoman NoTriono said, it's, it might be better to do a more, you know, in-depth fix than, than a Band-Aid approach. Not that I'm saying this is Band-Aid, but just let's adopt something and then go back and change it as we need to. It, it's, it is, it is a problem that is, that is deeply felt throughout the city. I, I certainly respect and appreciate that wanting to bring this forward, it's, it's been done a number of times since even I've been on the chair, so. See, if there's no more comments on this ordinance, we go ahead and have a roll call for this vote. The vote is for debate. Untable for debate.
Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Rockford?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase?
No.
Alderwoman NoTriono?
Yes.
Alderman Carlson?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Thank you. This remains tabled, although I will say, I think we, again, have an opportunity to create a working group that can work with our, our new administration and bringing a more comprehensive solution. Thank you. We move on to ordinances for committee consideration, Clark.
Chairwoman, do you want to do your, try and hand for your presentation before we do those?
Presentation supports ordinance. Yes, if, if you're here for Juneteenth. I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Good evening.
Good evening. I know it says do not touch. My name is Shirena Douglas. You need me to state my address, right? You don't need to state your address. My name is Shirena Douglas and my partner here, Shamika Carr Gregory, is handing out handouts. To the horseshoe. So just give you something tangible to hold on to after we leave. We are the organizing committee for Juneteenth Incorporated. The established business that is organizing Juneteenth celebration in Springfield. For the new council members to the horseshoe, welcome, congratulations on your elected terms. And if you did not know that Springfield, I know you already know that it's the home of Lincoln, but you probably weren't aware that this is the home of Juneteenth. Because most of you, minus Alderman Williams, probably didn't even know what the holiday of Juneteenth was. I know I didn't. When I was younger, I just celebrated it in the park because Springfield has been celebrating Juneteenth for over 20-plus years. And in the course of our celebrating, we actually learned and understand the history and the purpose. And now the nation and world understands the history and purpose of Juneteenth. And that is not just acknowledgement of the ending of slavery, but acknowledgement that two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was written and issued, the last slave was given their freedom in America, which is substantial to understand that freedom was not immediate. It had to be extracted. And like my partner's shirt says, Free-ish means that although black citizens were freed with the Emancipation Proclamation, because of the systemic issues this country has within its helm still currently, unfortunately, we was call ourselves still Free-ish, free, but not fully free. So we just want to present to you all what Juneteenth celebration is going to do for Springfield this year and then what we hope to do for the coming years.
Thank you very much.
Do I have a clicker? Look at that. Oh, that didn't work last time we were here. So we really want to iterate today the partnerships that we had. Again, Springfield has been celebrating Juneteenth for over 20-plus years in a grassroots effort, thanks to One in a Million Incorporated, which I want to take the time to tell Mike Williams happy birthday today. He better be listening. We have expanded our partnerships to not just include the city of Springfield, but also all, as many educational outlets as possible, which include the Illinois State Museum, Abraham Lincoln Presidential Museum, as well as the, the Lincoln Library. So last year, we replicated our attendance within the Comococks Park. That's the time we really capture our attendees is a music, two-day music festival in the park. And we had a 1,300, over 1,300 visitors last year for Saturday for our opening park celebration. And then about 700 attendees in the Sunday music celebration. Over 20-plus vendors and over 40-plus sponsors participated in last year's celebration. We are big on some type of sustainability because the importance of the celebration is to not just maintain it, but to expand our celebration throughout the city. As, again, it is important for the entire city to be celebrating Juneteenth as the city is, again, the home of Lincoln. We are also the home of Juneteenth. Substant, ways that we substantiated revenue included T-shirt sales, logo sponsorships, as well as parade and vendor entries. We did substantial marketing campaign last year, which included radio stations for the first time, as well as printed billboards and social media campaigns. We are going to be replicating those efforts this year as well and expanding our presence outside of the Springfield area into the central Illinois community. Because again, everyone knows exactly where the home of Lincoln is. And we want them to reiterate and understand that this, again, is the home of Juneteenth. So what do we have for this year? Last year, we expanded Juneteenth a bit with our normal 20-plus years, just doing two days at Comococks Park. We were out at the Illinois State Museum, as well as at Levitt Amp down at the Y Block. And this year, we are expanding it a bit more to include Lincoln Library and the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Museum and Library. So for Wednesday, June 14th, to celebrate Juneteenth here in Springfield, you can kick it off right outside those doors. You know, I know you're here enough, but you should have a placard for free parking. So you can come on down with us Wednesday to a free talent showcase. We are giving away free food and free activities. Lincoln Library has partnered with us, as well as the St. Men Valley Collection, to display historical artifacts specifically geared towards Juneteenth and the history that's tied to this area. Then Thursday, we will be at the Y Block in Levitt for the Levitt Amp series. Our headliner is the Saint Boogie Brass Band. So if you are into band music, this is going to be an intense, great way to start, to kick off the weekend as well with, with, again, free entertainment. This year, we are collaborating with Levitt Amp, Springfield and Downtown Springfield Incorporated, to include a black artist market at Levitt Amp. So what that will mean, the artists that are displayed at the Noir Art Exhibit at Illinois State Museum will have a chance to sell their art to the public during the Levitt Amp concert series. So it's another way for us, again, to engage the community in different ways through the celebration of Juneteenth. On Friday, we will be at the Illinois State Museum again for what we call the Free-ish Block Party. That will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. outside of the State Museum. It will be a cultural and resource fair for the public, as well as tons of family activities that the State Museum is supporting and supplying, as well as a private art reception for the Noir Juneteenth Art Exhibit. Noir was a baby of me and Shamika's, specifically helped to be horned by past director.
Ms. Cinnamon?
Cinnamon, I forgot, I can't even say her last name, but I loved her to death and she was a tremendous asset to this city. I'm born and raised here in Springfield. And if you've ever been to the State Museum, the exhibits have not changed for 30 years. Can you believe that, Alderman Redpath? 30 years, all right? Your hair has changed in 30 years, but the State Museum art exhibits had not. But under the new director of, of, directorship of Cinnamon, all that changed, all kinds of new things were coming to the State Museum, including the Noir exhibit. And so we hope that you all get a chance to look at it. It is already up, as I believe. It just got posted the Memorial Day weekend. It should be available through the summer, if you don't have a chance to, to observe it during the week of Juneteenth. We are going to then travel to Comococks Park for Saturday for our annual unity parade. This year, we are featuring a lot of home organizations, specifically Southeast Drumline has stepped up to be featured in this year's parade. And it's going to be an exciting one. We do walk, rain or shine. So please remember, if you're going to, to walk in the parade, to bring your rain jacket just in case, okay? And then Sunday, we commence, we usually commence Sunday in the park with the music festival. But with Juneteenth now being an official holiday and most people having Juneteenth off Monday, we have expanded the Juneteenth celebration for, in Springfield. And we are now also doing a Juneteenth breakfast on Monday, June 19th. So really now, there is no excuse for anybody to celebrate Juneteenth here in, in the city of Springfield, the home of Juneteenth. Because again, it is important for us all to recognize our, our city, but not just our city, our, our history. Because if we want to move forward, we definitely have to acknowledge our past. And so we want to ensure that we hone this into your brain. Let you know that this is the home of Lincoln, it's the home of the state fair. Springfield is also the home of Juneteenth and we thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate you guys. You guys have, have really, really done a fantastic job. And I'm not saying that because I know you guys are, I really mean that. You guys have, have really put some thought into it. You know, rest in peace to Cinnamon. She, she was great and I know she would love what you guys are going to do this year in, in the art, in the State Museum. Last year, it was, it was so amazing to me because we was drinking wine in the State Museum and I never thought we'd see that day, you know? And the different things that Juneteenth has brought. Years ago, this wasn't a national city and state holiday. It was just, you know, something that started at the Million Man March many, many, many years ago by our elders. So to see you, you and Erica and whoever else is a part of Juneteenth continue this going and growing, it is really truly special, not only to our city, but to our community as well. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
I, I would just like to add to that. This is, every year, you've, you've brought us something bigger and better. And I appreciate all the work, that's a lot of work you've put into this and expanding it. My only thing is I would say, make sure as you're promoting this, parking is free downtown for everyone. Don't need a placard, just, just bring your, bring, bring people down here. I think, I, I mean, in some ways, that might actually mean something to people, you know? Don't, don't plug the meters, just come and celebrate with us because this is really impressive. how much you've expanded the program this, again, this year. So thank you very much for all the work you've done. And I was just going to ask, are you finished taking sponsorships? Because I may have missed an email or something, so.
We are not finished taking any help. Sponsors, volunteers, all that. There's no more, no more ideas.
I promise, there are a lot of ideas represented in this, in this presentation, so thank you very much.
No problem.
You've cast that one. All right, well, again, and thank you for coming in. Sorry, a little delay there. We were, we got moving, once we get moving, we don't stop.
No, thank you for giving us the time today. I know you guys have a lot of important things on your agenda tonight.
And if you want to stay around for the ordinance, that's, that's great, but you're at the end of the agenda, so I think maybe if anyone has any questions about the ordinance...
Madam Chair, can I, if you will accept my motion to move it to the agenda, to consent agenda?
Thank you for picking up on what I was putting down. We have a motion in a second to move ordinance 2023... 227 to the consent agenda.
Motion in a second.
Any discussion? No? If you could read the ordinance, please, clerk?
Yes. 2023, 2027, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of $25,000 to Juneteenth Incorporated for the 2023 Juneteenth Freedom Fest pursuant Article 7, Chapter 37, Section 37.62 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Well, pass this on consent next week. Okay, we're going to chip away this ordinance, or this, this agenda, a couple pieces at a time. Thank you. Clerk, we'll move on to other ordinances now for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2023, 214, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 24-04-16 RIP-RETT materials with Calendar Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $156,960 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move in second for consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 215, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 24-03-15, substation excavator with Bobcat of Springfield in an amount not to exceed $73,175.28 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 216, an ordinance approves the purchase of software for SQL SharePoint upgrades with SQL Licensing and Sentinel Technologies Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $54,163 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 217, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of DIO SF6 Test Kit Recovery System from DIO Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $55,490.95 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 218, an ordinance approving payment to the Advanced Utility Systems Corporation, a division of N. Harris Computer Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $810,527.48 for annual software support and maintenance for a three-year term for the Infinity Customer Information System, CIS, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion in second for consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 219, an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Adam Hammett, doing business as Springfield KOA Campground for Site Number 28, located on 4320 KOA Road, Rochester, Illinois, for a five-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 220, an ordinance approving a telecommunications fiber capacity license agreement with Memorial Health System for various locations for a three-year timeframe for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023, 221, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a rideaway located at 1728 South 11th Street from Thomas Leeper and Cynthia J. Leeper in an amount not to exceed $1,990, including closing costs.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Move in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 222, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a rideaway located at 1731 South 11th Street from Jamel Alkabash, aka Jamel Akabaket, Alkabak, Alkabash, and Yusuf Alkabash, aka Yusuf Alkabash, in an amount not to exceed $1,990, including closing costs.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I do believe there may be a typo in the second spelling of Alkabash. Clerk, just, I don't know, they're spelled, it's spelled differently?
It's spelled differently, that's why the AK is, it has to do with the Ds.
Okay, they're spelled, okay, thank you very much. No, motion second for consent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 223, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a rideaway located at 1801 South 11th Street from Jamel Alkabash and Yusuf Alkabash, aka Yusuf Alkabash, in an amount not to exceed $1,990, including closing costs.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2023, 224, an ordinance approving the appointment of Dave Fuchs as Director of the City of Springfield Office of Public Works.
Move for debate. And just to let everybody know, we do, we put people on debate for the, or we don't put consent for nominations, so.
For all the politics.
It's nothing against, you know, anybody, we're just, that's just what we've done in the past.
So we have a motion, a second for debate. Mr. Fuchs, I know you're here, would you like to come on up and introduce yourself to the committee?
Good evening, all. My name is Dave Fuchs. I'm going to be 65 years old in a couple of weeks.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I said. It is my great pleasure to join the Busher administration. I have been in this, in front of this august committee many, many times. I have said as a, not so much as a participant, but as someone who enjoys the debate, the give and take of elected governmental officials, the debate between the legislative body and the executive body. I have great respect for everyone on this panel. I know some of you well, I know all of you, and I look forward to working together with all of you, and I'd take any question that you might have.
Thank you, and everyone should have gotten a copy of, of your resume, so do we have any questions at this time?
Really no questions, I just got to come.
Alderman, go right ahead, thank you.
Let me hit the button right.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
All right. No, Mr. Fuchs, I have a high respect for you as well, and the job that you're taking is a daunting task. I can assure you of that, as you probably have seen from so many of my emails coming. And, you know, we've had some great conversations briefly, I look forward to getting out in the ward with you. My only remark to you would be that the position that Daryl Harris used to have is a very important position, so whoever takes that on will have a heavy load, and they need to be ready for that, because that's an important position, especially for my community. As he knew the lay of the land there, you know, I could call him and shoot out an address, he knew where it was. So I think those things are important for a community like mine, and I know you're up to the task, sir. I just wanted to make those comments, thank you.
Look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I am going to speak, so we've obviously had a conversation about an issue that is prevalent in every ward, these absentee landlords and the concerns around properties. I don't know if you're aware, one of my first rental property issues was a house that literally had rats crawling up the drainpipe. This is something that we need to address. We did mention a working group with you, with your vision, with your background. We've all seen your resume with, we'll say, a variety of experiences and dealing with difficult situations. So would you be willing to kind of work with the council if we can find three members who can be available, to be flexible, work with you, work with legal, and see if we can't find some innovative ways to bring some solutions to the table?
Absolutely, absolutely. As you mentioned, my resume does have a wide variety of positions, different levels of government, and I have learned to work with just about anybody who is interested in moving the public interest forward, and I think that's what we need to do here. We need to move it forward. There's a lot of concern, we have different concerns. I have to tell you all that I am greatly impressed by the men and the women that I have met at Public Works. We have a lot of folks who have spent the majority of their careers working for this city. They love the city, they love the people in it, and they want to do the very best thing that they can for it. I'm willing to put myself forward in any fashion that you may need to work with anyone on this, on this council, and develop what we need for the future of the city of Springfield.
Thank you, and Alderman Donilon, I will get you in just a second. I just, I want to thank you very much for bringing up the men and women who work in the Department of Public Works, and that's one thing, I, I've talked to a number of people in that, in that division. They are dedicated employees who do the very difficult work that deliver some of the top priority frontline services that our community really expects from its city government. And if you could just, I think, from this council, I'll speak from my heart, but I'm pretty sure no one's going to disagree with me, that please convey our absolute thanks and appreciation of all the work that they do, and the kind of the silent, not always pretty job, but that is absolutely critical to keeping the city. We want to see them supported and grow your department so that those services can continue to be delivered in an effective and efficient manner.
One of the things that I have learned in every position I have ever occupied, and at every level of government, the number-one asset that any leader possesses are the men and women who work for them. It's the greatest asset you possess, and they must be protected.
Absolutely, thank you.
I look forward to move forward with you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Alderman Donilon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Fuchs, you know, one of the things that we've talked about already many times are just how important and how Public Works touches the lives of each and every citizen, whether they're driving to work, or whether it's a problem in their neighborhoods, and we've heard a lot about those here this evening. And, you know, you've been helpful already with me with even minor stuff, where someone's leaf bags got missed, but it was a big deal to that neighborhood, a big deal to that individual in particular, and I appreciate those efforts. I have had the opportunity to work with you in the past, and do know that you adhere to something that's extremely important to me, and that's when you get a phone call, you return it. And I know you'll continue to do that. One of the things I think that we've talked about in this horseshoe in recent months that needs to be addressed, and we already have the rules on the books to do this, we have a complaint-driven system, and I agree with that system. However, there are areas in particular, we've heard about some recent structures in the downtown area, Alderwoman purchases had to deal with some issues that have come up repeatedly. We need to be more proactive as a staff, and that's not a slam on anybody, because I know they got their hands full, but there needs to be a concerted effort. Some of these buildings downtown that are, that are empty, that didn't have working elevators, it's just, you know, you wonder and you ask, how does it get to that point? So if you could just keep that in mind, and as Alderwoman Conley mentioned earlier, maybe there's other cities that do things in unique ways and think outside the box, but I think you're going to have the support of this group to give you the tools necessary to do even better, and our groups and our staff do a wonderful job, so thank you.
Absolutely, and my door is open. Anytime that you feel that you need to communicate with me or someone on the Public Works staff, all you got to do is send up a signal.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more questions or comments? All right, well, thank you. You have been, you are on the debate agenda, so we certainly look forward to seeing you next Tuesday, same time, same place. And again, looking forward to seeing some exciting developments in our Office of Public Works.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 225, an ordinance approving the appointment of Edward P. Kenny as Fire Chief to the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for debate. Second.
Motion in second for debate. We'll have Chief Kenny come on up to the podium. Again, everyone has gotten a copy of Chief's resume, so you don't need to go over that in detail if you don't, unless you really want to.
No, no.
Please take a minute to introduce yourself, and we'll see your questions.
Yeah, I'm Ed Kenny, I've been with the department, you know, for a long time, for 26 years, and have had the pleasure of meeting most of you. And, you know, we've worked through a lot of problems, and I look forward to working with the new administration to deal with some of the existing problems. We don't want to be a long grass landlord, and so we've already been working with Director Fuchs to take care of your station aid issue.
I'd like to see you break some ground on station aid, but...
We would all, yes, we agree, so. But yeah, any questions? I'd be happy to field any questions.
Alderman Redpath?
You know, Ed, I've known you for a long time. I know your legacy, your family, through the Fire Department. When Mayor Busher decided to appoint you, I was jumping up and down, because you are a quality guy. You bring more than just expertise to the Fire Department, you bring common sense, something we need. You understand the issues, and unfortunately, you've had to hear from me a couple of times in the last week on issues...
That's quite all right, yes.
...of my ward, but I think the city is going to be well-served as you as chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This council is being extraordinarily gentle on everyone, so we will, again, thank you for coming tonight, we look forward to seeing you next week at the full council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second for the debate agenda. There's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 228, an ordinance authorizing a sponsorship payment of $12,000 to Mies Promotions for the Springfield Mile to be held September 2nd through 3rd, 2023, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Motion for consent.
Motion in second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2023, 229, an ordinance approving a sponsorship payment of $25,000 to International Route 66, Mother Road Festival Incorporated, for the 2023 Route 66 Mother Road Festival to be held September 22nd through the 24th, 2023, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move in second for consent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before we move to unfinished business, I do want to say I've left my script somewhere in my pile here. So Treasurer, Treasurer Fager, I skipped you. If you'd like to give us a belated Treasurer's report for tonight's meeting, my apologies. I didn't mean to catch you off guard.
Thank you, Chair Conley. The Treasurer's report for the month of April beginning balance is $67,387,204. We took in total receipts of $9,815,543. We had total disbursements in the month of April totaling $10,146,720, which left the corporate fund ending balance in the month of April at $67,56,027. The ending general fund balance includes $21,599,47, which is the April-ending ARPA balance money. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Were there any questions for the Treasurer tonight?
Motion to accept the Treasurer's report, as submitted, Madam Chair.
Move in second to accept the report, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much for your patience, Treasurer. Now we'll move to unfinished business. Does any council member have any unfinished business to bring before us tonight? Awkward silence concluded, seeing no unfinished business, do we have any new business tonight? Alderman Gregory?
Two weeks in.
I keep my reading glasses on so I can see you.
No, I just wanted to announce that Levitt Amp Series is this Thursday. It kicks off at 6 o'clock. Let me look at my notes here, you know, my eyes is bad.
I've got an extra pair in my drawer.
But the headliner will be Lily Lewis Project, and this is a completely free concert series that we just renewed for three years down on the Y Block, and it's something that our whole community enjoys, and I must be honest, the opener will be the Bad Boys, and I must be honest, besides the Bad Boys, many of the artists... and I must be honest, besides the Bad Boys, many of the artists, you know, I've never heard of, but I always have a great time down on the Y Block, really listening to them and enjoying just the festiveness of the Y Block. You know, while it's just an open space, and, you know, I hate empty lots in my ward, this particular lot has really brought us, brought us, brought us together for some fantastic things, and, you know, I look forward to seeing that through, and the people from Levitt, they are really energized with what we're doing in Springfield with this concert and how we've drummed it up, so I just wanted to make that announcement, thank you.
Thank you. The first one will be sponsored by our former, former Alderwoman Senator Doris Turner, so exciting to see that, lots of food and drinks and...
Senior night.
Good times. Yeah, senior night, I officially qualify.
No.
No, I do, I've got a card. Alderwoman Purchase?
Thank you, Chairwoman. This Friday is First Friday for Downtown Springfield, Inc., and our downtown retail businesses will be open late until eight p.m., and we're also inviting you to bring your pets out. I might bring Tiger with me.
Then I will leave Sophie at home.
You could bring Adolf. And then I have one other announcement, I just wanted to thank the Springfield Police Department and the Springfield Fire Department, have a property on Seventh Street, and there was a huge fire, and our Springfield Police Department was able to get into that home and get over an eighty-year-old woman out of there that I knew very dearly, and her house is completely totaled, so I just wanted to thank you all for the work that you did and how quickly you got there. It caught my house a little bit, but it's not too bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, if you'd like to come up, thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase, thank you very much for the thanks, and I'd just like to say, on behalf of myself and the senior staff, thanks to Officer Chance Warnisher, he's the officer that made a split-second decision to essentially rescue an eighty-three-year-old woman, and I'm very grateful that he did that, very proud moment for us at the agency, and he'll be recognized in the near future with a life-saving award because of his heroic actions, so proud of him, and it's a proud day for our agency, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please share all of our thanks for that, that's really wonderful. And Alderwoman Purchase, I hope your house is okay?
It's okay. All right, a little work, but it's okay.
No, you did.
A little work we can live with.